I can't move with that.
Even though it's a case of life safety?
Life safety, the parents got a kill for him?
Creates, says creating.
That has nothing to do with school board, that has nothing to do with police.
We'll talk about that.
Who's on this meeting today? Okay, that must have been the change. That must have been the change.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Six o'clock, I call a meeting to order. And first up, it was one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, approval of the minutes of September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Someone?
We have a second. We have a second. All right, any discussion, comments, corrections, otherwise? Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes of September twenty-sixth? Ms. Yanis. Approve the roll counts dated October sixth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-nine cents, dated October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, eighty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Do we have a motion to approve those rolls? Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the rolls? Ms. Yanis? Thank you. Reporting committees. Do we have any committee reports?
I guess I got nominated for the curriculum committee report out. We met last week for the first time for the year. Michelle, we did introductions. Michelle introduced us to people that didn't know each other. She shared what the work had been this summer, all the different areas that they've gone over. And I am not going to name them off because it was massive. It did a really, a lot of work over the summer. And the main focus of the meeting was on math and the new math curriculum. There was a great report out from the math coordinator. He talked about how the program was going, about all the support that they're actually getting from iReady. And it's really not just a, it's really an individualized support. They have one woman that they deal with constantly. She checks to see where they need help. So it's not just a broad support system. And that's going really well. It's where it's supposed to be right now. There's been a little frustration with teachers trying to learn to step back, they were saying, but that's really getting good. And then we talked about the fact that there's been for the next four or five meetings. Yeah, like probably every other month, there'll be another meeting and it will be another focus on a different curriculum area at each meeting. So it seems like it was off to a good start. Did I forget anything?
That's true. Very good. While we're talking about curriculum, let me just ask. It was curriculum committee Earl that you were on that you stepped aside because of your, okay. So we would be looking, who else is on the curriculum committee?
Well, yeah.
All right, so we do have two representatives there, so that's good. Or we could have a third if there's an interesting person, but two is.
Well, it's, I mean, it's hard. I'm retired, so it's easier for me than everybody else is working and it's two thirty in the afternoon.
Yeah, just throwing that out there as well had been there, so. If there's an interest, let me know. I guess I will speak on the delegate, as the delegate from the, they had the main school management, the main school board association conference, or their annual meeting. Saturday morning, virtually. Well, started Saturday morning, went into the afternoon. You had all seen the resolutions. That was up for consideration. All but one passed. There were some minor edits on, on few of those, but nothing that changed the gist of what you'd seen previously, just a couple of minor changes, grammatical changes or whatever. The one that did not pass was the one on public comment, where there was the resolution to try to align that more in line with some other public comment statutes. But that didn't pass as it was, so anyway. But other than that, everything else happened pretty much, and that's pretty much that. They appointed new officers and all the things that they do at the annual meeting. So that's what I have on that. Is there any other committee reports? It's better than it had been. First year they did virtually, it was all day. Actually, it was all evening, literally. This was three hours, so it was an improvement. So anyway, we don't have any other committee reports, so administrator reports. So we'll start with, I'll start with Erica. I was looking at Tom, but Erica, don't want Tom to take all your thunder, so.
All right, good evening, everyone. So I will just give you a few updates about things that have happened recently at WES. The early release in service days were, as one of my staff put it afterwards, a good balance of wellness activities, professional development, and planning time. We tried really hard to offer opportunities that would help our staff, not just in that particular day, but, but, you know, more long-term, to take care of themselves. We were thankful, made free to come in, did yoga, we had volleyball, which people played. It was supposed to be just a forty-minute session, and they ended up playing for an hour. That's how much of a good time they had. And I think, you know, we are busy all the time with the work of teaching and educating. And so I think it was a good opportunity to take a small amount of time to dedicate to taking care of ourselves and kind of bonding with each other. We then spent time doing the iReady training. As was mentioned, we're pretty fortunate with the training and the way that it has been laid out with the opportunity for some flexibility of our own needs. And the presenter was the same presenter we had at the beginning of the year, and we'll have her again in January. So she is learning what we need. And so was able to recommend to us that we separate our professional development into three groups. So we had a K-two, three, four, five, and then a six through eight group. So that was again more tailored to what those groups would be looking at. We also did a training on the workshop model, which is just a structure that can be used in our classrooms to help not only do whole group instruction, but that in sort of a more mini lesson version, and then to spend time with students in small groups, especially at the lower elementary level. Small group instruction is really more beneficial for our young learners. So we did a workshop on that. We again offered some planning time in there. I don't know if Michelle will speak to it, but she did some curriculum with our specific specialists, so that was good. We're working this year on making sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our faculties. So I think those were filled days and we got really good feedback on sort of how it was laid out. We do have parent teacher conferences coming up in November. We will have them November seventh and November ninth. November seventh will be in-person, November ninth will be virtual. We found last year, we had a lot of feedback that parents liked the virtual option. I think it gave them some flexibility. But we also know that some people want it in-person, so we tried to do, tried to separate it out to make it easier to manage. So one day will be in-person, one day will be virtual, and then we'll see how that goes and make changes for the next round of parent teacher conferences if needed. Last time we met, some people asked some questions about enrollment numbers. So today I brought my document with me at this time. So we currently have an enrollment of five hundred and thirty-eight students, twenty-one students in our four-year-old program. We have sixty-seven kindergarten students, eighty-two first grade students, seventy-two second grade students, seventy-three third grade students, seventy-seven fourth grade students, sixty-six fifth grade students, and eighty-sixth grade students.
How many fifth grade?
Fifth grade, sorry, sixty-six. So hopefully all of those add up to five hundred and thirty, because that's the documents. So as I said last time, I wanted to make sure that I brought those numbers to you. And I think we'll talk a little bit more about goals later on. That's all I have for now.
Any questions?
I will say I really enjoyed, I taught Yelda for the teachers and about twenty-four showed up, which was a huge group. And they did, I had a group approach me after asking if I'd be willing to do like a session, like a six-week session after school. And I am all on board with that, so if you want to coordinate with me, I think if teachers feel supported and they have tools, you know, how to breathe and relax and just kind of center themselves and they can better support our students. And they have really tough days, so full of yoga. At two thirty, three o'clock, I'd be happy to do it. And I can just do it like as a donation, you know.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Did Tommy have anything? Okay, she took all your thunder. Jason?
Good evening, everyone. A couple highlights to report out. Our student spotlights, our first recognition for students and staff are the following students. Silver Picard. Sorry, Dreama, I'm gonna mess up your last name. Dreama Gio Camuzzi. Trevor LaValle, Belin Farnum, Oliver Olson, Stanley Leclerc, David Kimball. And our staff spotlight went to Cindy Drew, who's one of our new hires this year. She's doing a fantastic job. And Mitchell Walston, Mr. Walston's a seventh grade science teacher for his everything he does outside the classroom. He attends a lot of our meetings. I'll talk about PBIS shortly in our goal presentation as well. NWEA testing has wrapped up. We're tracking down a few students to finish that that were absent last week. So we'll have some more data to report out. I just want to say kudos to Mrs. Hersson. She really took the bull by the horns and did a lot of work on that, so thank you to Kate. We had our first middle school dance last Friday, which was well-attended. Supports our, that first dance support our PBIS program. We have four more upcoming that will support various programs such as Renaissance, civil rights, et cetera, which is a very big thing for middle school students. If you have a middle school student, you understand where I'm coming from. We ran our first one last spring after the COVID stuff, and you would have thought Justin Bieber was in the gymnasium as a kid, and it was just awesome. So parent teacher conferences we had last week, so we had three hours on Wednesday, three hours on Thursday. We filled every slot for the core content areas. In fact, families are still reaching out to coordinate times to meet with our seventh and eighth grade teams. So I want to thank our teachers for going above and beyond, not just meeting the six-hour requirements, but they're reaching out and having those meetings. We did in-person unless there were extenuating circumstances which would warrant the virtual, and they were so, they were well-attended. Our MMTC program started up last week. Waterville offers that for middle school schoolers in central Maine. So we sent twenty-five students over to MMTC to partake in various trades. They're assigned a mentor or high school student, so it was just fantastic opportunity, and that will continue monthly. And then finally, we have an author visit. You remember my presentations before, five, six, seven years ago. Each year we bring in an author through the ELA department. We do workshops through our, coordinated by our ELA department. Cynthia Lord is the author. She will be doing a presentation for the seventh grade, the sixth graders, because there is some links with the curriculum, and our eighth grade class tomorrow morning. And I do have some times, if any of you are interested to attend that. Her debut novel was Rules, which she won a Newbury Honor Book, and she was a winner of a Schneider Book Award. So very exciting to welcome her into, so that students have an understanding of the writing component that goes into, you know, books and such. That's all I have this evening.
Any questions, Mr. Byres? Thank you all. All right, thank you very much. You must be speaking for the high school.
I am. On behalf of the Mississauga, Oregon High School, good evening, just a few things to recognize here. Like the junior high, we've had our parent teacher conferences. We had ours on October fifth and sixth. Those were after school and in-person. They were fairly well-attended. I wouldn't say it was as busy probably as the junior high, but still had a good showing with parents coming in. So I thought it was good to see, you know, opening the building back up, getting people in here and seeing their way around the school for the first time, giving some tours and whatnot, so that's good. On November ninth, students and staff will be doing the Futures Day, which is something that had happened in the past quite a bit. And because of, you know, the pandemic, they got shut that down. But they'll be going to different businesses, employers, colleges, and whatnot, and kids have signed up, been put into groups based on their interests, or if they're young enough, just maybe assigned, but still, there'll be traveling a couple of those during that day. And that's always been a big hit, so we're certainly looking forward to that coming up. This Saturday, the drama department will be putting on another dance. This will be the first of them. Usually we just have three here, but they requested to have another one, so it is a Halloween dance. And that'll be this Saturday from eight to eleven. Hopefully it was good turnout for that to raise some money for their department. And so tickets are on sale for that, and hopefully it's a good show. Students of the Month. In the past, as you know, the high school has always done a student of the month. But one of the things we talked about this summer is recognizing more students for all of the great things that are going on here. So one of the things that we're doing, in addition to some others as we go through the year, is doing it by grade rather than just by school. So we're going to identify a student each month per grade. So we had an assembly a week ago, last Thursday, I believe it was, and we recognized students for student of the month as well as some other things in the school. So freshman student of the month is Hassan Hobie. And he is a great young man. He also received some recognition as an eighth grader last year, so he's continuing, you know, his same ways there. Sophomore Ethan McCaslin is the representation there. He is another kid that's involved in a lot of things. Junior class is Tyler Gaines, a very quiet, kind of keep to himself kid, but just an outstanding young man that, you know, everybody has a lot of respect for here in the building. And then our senior student of the month is Pedro Garcia. And if you've met him, you know Pedro is a very personable, outgoing kid and does a great job. So we're lucky to have these kids and happy to recognize them for students of the month. And that's all I've got, unless you have questions, yeah?
Which of the students gets the parking spot?
Well, from what I'm guessing, there's only one that has his license right now, so we're gonna go with Pedro as a senior.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. Senior, we'll say senior because.
Yeah.
Say senior. Yeah.
Well, it's important, you know.
It is important.
In the spring, it'll be a bigger deal.
It will.
June, so she was June, she had it through June, July, August. Yeah. It's September. August, September. Let's see, all right, Mr. Verboyn?
We wrapped up a very successful all-season for junior high sports. Girls soccer team undefeated, I believe, boys won undefeated. Football for junior high will wrap up tomorrow. And then we do have two teams still in the playoffs for, three teams. We have cross-country going to the state championship Saturday. We have football playing at Newport on Saturday. And tomorrow evening at three fifty, our boys soccer team will be playing in the quarterfinal round. I attended a meeting today, unfortunately, as of today, as of today, there would not be a hockey season for this winter because the MPA and the officials have come to an end pass, but they're not even discussing, they're not even talking right now. So we still have time to get that taken care of, but they're, tag one of them on what the officials get paid. So, so as of right now, we had ten in the meeting. We as a group, those seventy of us, including superintendents, principals, we've recommended mediation. I decide I have to accept it. So we're hoping to at least come back to the table, because at the end of the day, it's about the kids. And I would say that's why people get into this business of wrapping and education is about the kids. So hopefully that's news about the next, next meeting, but right now everything's great.
Just, just for curiosity's sake, do, do officials in hockey get paid a lot more than football or basketball?
No, but what they wanted, I mean, the talk is, they feel because of the danger of their sports, they should be compensated more than other sports. And because of the cost of their equipment that they have.
Skates.
Skates and stuff like that. So obviously I'm not sitting at the table, so I couldn't give you all the, all the details, but that's kind of what I heard.
I'm just curious.
And I'm sure the MPA's concern is if you give into one group, every other group's coming after you next time. And even though, you know, I talk about it's ten dollars per game per official, you do that with every sport, you have twenty dollars plus travel. You know, you're talking real dollars at the end, at the end of the day. And we all know budgets can be tight going forward, so gotta take that, you know, into that too, so.
Does the whole state of Maine, no high school hockey because they don't have?
If they don't come to an agreement.
Wow.
Yeah, hopefully they'll come to an agreement. Girls ice hockey starts the fourteenth of November, so we still have time. Thank you.
Oh, that wonderful, no. Michelle?
Good evening. Some things to update you that happened in my world around curriculum. This week we began having, I would call them the K-12 curriculum meetings, where we have a representative from elementary, junior high, and high school, usually department chairs come together, and we talk about the curriculum across the district, K-12. We started that last year, the fall and the spring, and it was very positive. And it really helps us decide what is the work to be done in each department so that everybody's moving forward. And we're, and each department is everywhere, so it just keeps the, each department moving forward. And for the, you know, the high school English teacher to know about the, what's going on in the elementary school is very valuable for us as a district. So that, it's a full week, this week actually, not next week, we're here, this week, full week of all of that. Now, WEA testing ends on Friday. During the workshop day, as already mentioned, we had a full schedule overlapping activity for everybody around curriculum work in math, art, health, because as social studies, every department. I'm really kind of proud of that. It was very like a puzzle, all put together, and it was all, you know, none of it was busy work. It was all issues that we've been talking about and moving everything forward, so I was pleased with that. We'll be receiving the mobile computer science carts sometime in our near future. Our grant was, that grant was non-competitive. It was approved. We just have to get a budget set up and order them. It's a reimbursement system, and we'll get reimbursed for the purchase. We get one cart for every one hundred students. ESL language, language learners, multi-language learners. We received a grant, fifteen thousand dollar non-competitive grant for that program, and we'll be applying that for, to upgrade the district on translation materials. We should be providing more things translated. And that money's gonna be very helpful in bringing us up to speed on that front. And earlier, or last week rather, Title One had an information night, the parents were involved. A few families did come, that was encouraging. Last year it was not attended at all, so that was looking in the right direction. And if any parent missed that, the slide deck is on our website. That's all the updates I have.
Is your newsletter here sent out to all the teachers?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Michelle? Very good, thank you. Jennifer?
We also use some of our time to help the focus for the ed techs on their wellness and their mental health. And they use a little bit of their time to participate in some activities that they could then maybe do outside of school for relaxation. We finished up our safety care training for the year. There were some techs that could not attend in the summer, so we were able to offer them their recertification. CPR certification was also taken care of for the year for our ed techs. Ed techs also worked on their public school works and on BHP certification requirements. And they also spent some time with our behavior specialists to focus on some behavior interventions. We just finished up our October one count. We have two hundred and eighty-five students in the district that are identified as students with special needs. That's an increase from twenty-seven, or increase of twenty-seven students. The largest group that's increased is other health impairment, which encompasses a few things, but anxiety is one of those. That was an increase of eleven students.
What is that in terms of percentage of the student body?
I did reach out to Michelle to try to get the numbers so that I could present that, but I didn't get a response. So I don't have the total number of the district in order to give you a percentage.
What was your, what was the number you said?
Two eighty-five.
Two eighty-five.
So is OHI the largest group throughout, is that, or just the largest group that increased?
It is just the largest increase. Our largest group is specifically on disability.
Earl, you asked a question, if we're assuming we're around about eleven hundred students, it'd be about twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven percent.
Any questions, or Jennifer? Okay, thank you very much. Will, did you have anything for us aside from your presentation?
I would say nothing on top of that.
Okay, very good. Shelley?
I don't really have a whole lot to report. I'll kind of update what's been happening with us in maintenance. We've been busy the whole month trying to keep up with athletics and keeping the fields all lined and straight for the athletes. As we know, as Jim said, that's all winding down now, and as soon as the rain stops, we're gonna start doing our fall cleanup. We're winterizing the irrigations, systems on the different fields from Weber to football, field hockey, and baseball. So, you know, we'll be busy for the next month just trying to get ready for cold weather. It seems funny this year because for two years now, it's been very, very quiet for building requests to use the buildings. So all of a sudden this year, man, it is exploding. The requests are coming in fast and very, almost quicker than I can make them out and get them out for approval. And, you know, we have Park and Rec with baseball, Park and Rec cheering, we have Cub Scouts, Brownies, PTO, Fall Craft Fair. So it's, it's exciting, you know, COVID is over, we're back to where we're supposed to be. So, and hopefully it'll stay that way. But folks are excited, they're anxious, the book space in the buildings, and, and hopefully we can accommodate all of them. The custodians have been great the last month. They've been healthy. I have one custodian that's out with some surgery. But fortunately, we were able to secure a part-time custodian that's been coming in and filling that slot nightly. So it's not been extra work that we've had to heap onto other guys or juggle balls everywhere to make sure it gets done. So I'm excited about that. The custodian, the sub-custodian is wonderful. He's a great guy who works hard, and he knows what our expectations are, so that's been great. But other than that, we've had a busy month, and we're ready for the next month. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did Lee have anything from the council? Welcome back, Lee, we haven't seen you for a while.
Nothing, nothing really new, other than, I don't know, it's really just happy to be here and just kind of observing. Nothing really to report from the council.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
Next up would be a member with budget abstract.
Thirty-five sixty percent of our fiscal year has gone by, and thirty-one point eleven percent of our budget has been spent on the removal of covered items. Now, we're just over thirty percent of our budget that has actually been gone.
So far, so good. Do you have a question from Amanda?
Peter. There's an alert new that we transferred an ed tech two Cindy Giloff from her current position to an ed tech three position at Woodson Elementary School. This is not, she's still in the same job. She's just doing different responsibilities because she's needed as an ed tech three. Large case lawyers with that in that particular resource room. And so by making, transferring her to an ed tech three, she's able to do more things to assist the teacher. The building principals, Lieutenant Brad Hubert from the Windsor Police, and I attended the two-hour active shooter preparedness webinar presented by the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, which is part of Homeland Security. We did that last week. The webinar was an opportunity for us to consider various factors in the development of our plan. We came away with some good resources that we'll be able to use as we continue to hone ours together. Officer Stewart was not able to be in attendance with us this evening, I don't believe, and she was not able to be at that particular meeting. But I know that you've asked for a report, and we will put her on the next agenda as we continue to meet with our group. Wednesday, the 26th, Main Superintendent Association Annual Meeting. This is the first time in quite some time, but this is gonna be an in-person meeting. This will take place at the Augusta Civic Center. Drum Woodson will do a session, a session on communication with the public during the times that we are in. Melissa Condon, who is a school emergency coordinator from the main school safety center, will present on key elements and components to emergency safety plans. Keynote speaker will be David Horziger. He's the CEO from the Trust Edge Leadership Institute. He'll be speaking on driving performance in school culture with trust. I will attend that, I'll attend that that day. And I will also attend the next two days, which is Thursday, October 27th, and Friday, the 28th, which is the annual M-A Fall Conference. Joel had sent information out to those who might be able to attend, and I know that it's difficult that you can't all be there. That's Thursday and Friday. The only other thing I have is just a reminder that November 1st at 2:30. Thank you, Karen, for the reminder. Karen is the next policy meeting. Marking your calendar so those of you who aren't there.
November 1st at 2:30?
At 2:30, yeah.
Okay, any questions for Peter? Okay, very good. Public comment. I have a whole introduction for public comment, but I won't take everybody's time up on that if there isn't anybody here that wishes to speak on any subject out to the public comment. So we don't have anybody. I will save everybody from listening to the introduction. But for those that are online, if you want to read that introduction and our public comment policy is posted on the website. If you'd like to come at a future meeting to speak. And we're always open to emails and such. And our contact information is on the website if you'd like to comment through those means. So we've got nobody for public comment. We'll move on to our business. And first up is the elementary school construction.
So Shelley and I can talk about this a little bit. The pictures in your packet regarding progress being made. And since these pictures were taken, a lot more progress has been made. I believe all of the steel has been tied in. Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong, taking a quick peek at that. So things are looking, things are looking good back there. Shelley, Erica, and I meet with Ledgwick every second or third Monday of the month to go to get the site and go over. And Amanda, to get the site and go over their requests and any issues that they might have with Ledgwick and Stephen Platt Associates. Shelley, anything you wanna throw in there?
No, I do know that they've got, we spoke about the cabling that goes to, they've got the structural steel to bring the steel all into plumbing through, which was kind of interesting, that conversation. That cabling is all in place now, and they're plumbing up the whole structure so that they'll get ready to tie that all together. You know, they've been working extremely diligently out there. But the rain makes things extremely hard right now. So let's, you know, it didn't rain all summer long. Now, all of a sudden, this fall, it decides it wants to start raining, and it's not stopping. But, you know, if we can shut off their waterworks, you know, they've been a lot more done. They're excited and moving forward, and so far, so good. They haven't seen any significant delays in materials as of this time. So we are fingers crossed and hoping that we can keep moving forward.
They're, they're actually, that's a really good point, Shelley. They're actually planning around windows because they're having a hard time getting windows. So they're planning around what they're gonna do if the windows don't come in in time. They do plan on having it enclosed for the next month. Windows or not.
Yeah.
Again, I can't say enough about Ledgwick. What a great company to work with, you know, they're, they're so wonderful. They are, they're just a nice company to work with. And I would recommend them to any commercial project out there to hire this company because they've worked closely with Erica and Tom about, you know, keeping the windows open so the kid, you know, uncovered. So the kids can kind of watch the equipment out there. And, you know, these little kids to see these cranes out there. Man, that's the highlight of their day, you know? And they're willing to allow that all to happen, so it's exciting. And, you know, the contractor, they had the kids come out one day and had the kids all write their names on one of the beams that they added to the building. So how exciting is that?
That's cool.
So they are, I can't say.
That's cool. How the kids are gonna be engineers.
Inspiring.
Yeah, that's great.
That is great.
Okay, good back there. Thank you. New business. So first up is update on district initiatives related to student achievement and respectful and responsible students.
Michelle's gonna pick us off and give us an overview of our work.
This year, we took a slightly different approach to setting the stage for the work we would do in the years. We started with our leadership retreat. As we felt that we were finally coming out from under the burden and duress of the COVID pandemic, we recognized the need to regain our bearings and reignite our faculty, staff, and students. So this was the opening presentation to the faculty leadership. It was titled Reignite Engagement. We did a cool, went outside and launched rockets. Nobody expected to do that, it was really cool. And we, I did that, you know, we did that to set the stage for this conversation about engagement. And they did not expect it, and it had a very powerful effect. So this year's retreat was a time to lay a foundation upon which this year's conversations and work would build. We maintained the two categories of emphasis that we always talk about every year. Revisiting the language and ideas within each category, knowing that these are not one-and-done topics, but these are conversations to have across our district over time. And so we have our academic achievement, respectful and responsible categories. And within that, we brought back the conversation about accelerated learning. And a reminder that accelerated learning does not mean that we move kids quickly through curriculum accelerate. But it means that when you actually accelerate, you're stopped, and you start and move forward. And that's what the emphasis of accelerated learning is about, to not remediate the kids because we think, oh, you're not quite ready yet. We have to stop and go backwards. We want kids moving forward. So what are the things that we can do to put kids in grade level content more often than not? So that's a point of conversation we started last year. We're continuing that this year. High-impact teaching strategies. We refer to John Hattie and Marzano. We know that there are research-based teaching strategies that, when applied at the right time with the right students, are proven to accelerate student achievement. And so we're focused on what are their strategies? How and when do you use them? We have conversations about establishing a systemic assessment plan across the district. And we've made some strides with that in terms of really tailoring our calendar in each building and building in time to talk about an assessment after it happens, and what does it mean, and what are the teachable things we can gain from it. And then we wanted to put this out on the leadership retreat. We didn't talk a lot about it, but the main Department of Education has changed their structure from being siloed by departments to an integrated model. So you no longer can call the social studies specialists at the state because they don't have one. They're all melded together now. And that's quite a shift. It's a dramatic shift, actually. But I think there are some places where we can think about where that makes sense for kids. The junior high is a small school. Doesn't make sense that kids have an integrated experience there. The elementary school's very accustomed to doing integration between the science and the story that they read this morning, and the science lesson ties into it. You know, so there are places, I think, where it's happening naturally. And it's a conversation we just have on our radar. As the Department of Education has made this shift, I anticipate it's gonna spread out throughout the state, that conversation about integrating. So that was discussed. We would have, attendance is always an issue that we talk about each year. And then we're continuing our work with diversity, equity, inclusion, being aware of those issues, looking at policies, looking at practices. Do kids see mirrors when they're here? Do they see windows? Meaning, do they see themselves reflected in the things we talk about? Can they look outside and see others and have empathy and understanding of those others? So that's a conversation we've been having. This year, the administrative team's approach was to set a direction for the district to move in, to define a focal point or a lens through which initiatives and ongoing work would be aimed at or viewed through. So we wanted to step back and take a more global view of setting a goal. And we wanted to umbrella it, umbrella our school goals under something a little bit bigger, a little more meaningful. And this is what we came up with, engagement. And if you think about it, if our students are engaged, if our faculty is engaged, these other issues will come into focus. Students will achieve more if they're engaged. They'll show up to school if they're engaged. By all of the things that we typically talk about, we say if we could step back and just name it one thing, engagement would be what we'd want to talk about. So for the retreat purposes, we defined engagement in this way, the degree to which attention and curiosity, interest, optimism, and passion students show, and so forth. So that's what our leaders were talking about. That's kind of set the stage, the foundation upon which the building goals and so forth, all the initiatives and the conversations that we're having throughout the year, all come back to this idea of engagement, are our kids engaged? And an example, I'll give an example that came up in the curriculum committee meeting that we had recently. The high school math department, as you probably know, is doing a book study with the main Math and Science Alliance. And the book is called Building Thinking Classrooms. And one of the goals of the book is to have kids up, physically up out of their chairs and over to a whiteboard talking through a math problem. And that seems so simple, but that's not how we have been teaching our kids math. They sit in their seat, right? This is totally different. They're up, and they're having conversations. And the level of engagement that teachers have also, among themselves as a faculty, and then among the kids, has gone way up. The kids are talking about math, they're excited about math. They come in through the door and say, what are we doing today that's gonna be cool in math? That just wasn't happening. And so that's just an example of some of the changes we're trying to make in the pedagogy and in our emphasis on engagement. So in my small way, I'm keeping the conversation going in the newsletter. This year, I'm reading this book, Just Ask Us. It's about student engagements from a student's perspective. So if you ask them, what is engaging to you? It will tell you, and they wrote a book about it. So I'm taking a chapter each month and putting that together into the Inside Look newsletter that is shared with the faculty, and it's available online. So that's my small way of keeping the conversation going. And then the principals will be speaking about the different initiatives they're thinking about, are working on in their.
Have you established any kind of metrics to just level? Or just to track engagement to, okay, baseline, 22, 23, we're here?
Well, right.
I mean.
Right, well, I'm gonna use evidence. This is, this was our actual goal, but tonight, we weren't gonna get into the numbers. We were just trying to give it over. But I thought I would be asked, so I was prepared. The evidence of it would be in the change in the scores. And so I do have in our title application, specific numbers on, they want to see a higher percentage of students meeting their projected growth. That was the target.
Projected growth.
Projected growth, right. So we know what we were last year, and we talked, we had the whole shumigig about let's move kids further along and see more projected growth. And so if you want to see the exact language of that and the numbers, I have that, but tonight was more of an overview. But I'm happy to bring it up next time if you'd like. So yes, we do have a measurable, yeah.
A good one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Guess we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
You said Michelle's picking up, so is there more that they're speaking?
Yeah, and before somebody else speaks, I would just like to say that the newsletter that Michelle puts together, the one thing newsletter, is based on book study, book that she's read. The administrators can take that and use it with teachers to keep this on the front of mind throughout the course of the year. Because as she mentioned, it's not a one-and-done. It's a topic that we want to continue to revisit, and we want to continue to work on to make sure our kids are engaged in their learning. And it's from the elementary school, right after the junior high school, and I think math, science, we're seeing, we're seeing these conversations taking place in both of those content areas, which is pretty exciting.
So that's why I asked the question about whether to send out to the students, I mean, to the other teachers, because it looked to me like really good information that everyone should be required to read.
You're right, John. It's really good information. Yeah, so the building administrators are going to, we're going to report out. Erica's going to be in first. Chad is not here with us this evening. So I probably won't be doing his report unless you'll be great to do that first. But Chad is not here, so he's not being involved, I believe.
Well, again, so I'm just gonna briefly go over Woods Elementary School's goals. We have three goals. One has a specific literacy focus, one has a specific math focus, and one has an attendance focus. Our literacy goal really is generally to increase our percentage of students who are meeting benchmark at the end of the year. So that's the broad goal. And we're doing this a few ways. One of our action steps is something we've already done, which was we did a training at the beginning of the year for the DRA. That's the assessment thing we use to help us monitor how students are doing. And what we had found over time was people knew how to do it. They needed to work on it. I think I already said this at a prior meeting, they needed to know what to do with it. So we did training at the beginning of the year on that. So that was one of our action steps that we've actually already completed. So I feel good about that. One of the other great things that we have is we have a literacy specialist. So literacy coaching happens throughout the year in our classrooms. And teachers have the option of having this person come in and give them feedback, or having Mrs. Bryden do a model lesson and them learning from that. So, you know, we're pretty fortunate that we're able to offer coaching for teachers throughout the year. And she schedules herself, just like our math specialist does, in classrooms throughout the year. So the teachers know, these are the three days that I'm gonna be in your room. What do you want from me, what do you need from me? We also have an action step, which is to really look at data and use it to inform instruction. And one of the ways that we do that is with our FLT. We have two additional days built into our FLT schedule, and actually had one of those today. And so we looked at, and this was for both literacy and math, but as a, as a faculty leadership team. but as a faculty leadership team, we really looked at, what does our data tell us? And how is it going to help us moving forward? So we will do that again as an F L T. And then we have asked our faculty leadership team members to work with their teams throughout the school year to have those conversations about data. You know, one of the things that came up today was, well, what if somebody feels uncomfortable with somebody else seeing their data? Because it's hard. Like, when all your numbers are there for somebody to see, it's really hard. And so we talked about how that's our goal. Our goal is for people to walk in and be comfortable with that. And we just are going to, you know, move forward, knowing that we're all here for students and to do what's best for students. The other thing for one of our action steps for literacy was the workshop model training that I talked about. This workshop model is designed so that teachers can meet in small groups, which means that that instruction in that small group is targeted specific to what that group needs. So it allows for us to differentiate more effectively than when you're in a whole group. So those are just a few. There's some other action steps, but those are a few related to our literacy goal. For our math goal, again, I-ready training, it is a new program. We've already had two of the trainings. We will have a third one in January. We have our math coach, who has already been consistently in classrooms this year, supporting teachers. I think this was already mentioned, but one of the hardest parts about this new program is something called productive struggle. It's the idea that we are not giving the kids the answer or the method, that we are allowing them the opportunity to figure it out before we help them. And that's really hard, because we try very much to help people. So everybody's working on it, but it has been, it has been a struggle for the teachers. Again, we have an action step with data review, which we did today. So similar to the literacy action steps as well. One of the things that we talked about when we met at F L T today was we looked at our I-ready scores last year, beginning and end. And then we looked at our beginning of the year scores for this year. And we said, so what do we expect to see at the end of the year? And I think people were like, hmm. And we talked about the fact that we might see not the gain we anticipated, because it's the first year. And sometimes that first year, the rollout and getting used to something new, might be tricky. So although I think, I think this program is tremendous, you know, I think we are also trying to be realistic about the fact that it's a new program. We have to work on scope and sequence and making sure that we're addressing those core priority standards. So we're going to keep working hard. Attendance, our absentee chronic absenteeism rate last year was higher than we would like it to be. We know that there are a lot of factors that were part of that. But our goal is to decrease that. And we hope to look at things like student engagement, remediation instead of acceleration, instead of remediation, and then diversity, equity, and inclusion. A few of our action steps are, we do attendance meetings where we have a variety of people there. Mr. Herson's there, our school social workers are there. And we go through the list of those students who are at that point in time chronically absent, meaning they missed 10% of the school days at that point. And we look at why. And so we are able to really pinpoint those kids who maybe had their appendix out. And so that's why they missed so many days, or just that they have been sick for so many. So it gives us the opportunity to really meet and talk about what are some of the whys? And then try to develop some plans for those students. Again, I'm going to say workshop model in each of these, because the nice thing about workshop model as it relates to attendance is it does help us differentiate, which keeps students engaged. When students have meaningful work that is specific to them and they're getting that direct instruction from their teacher that's very targeted. I have found in my own experience that it makes them more engaged. When they're doing tasks during the workshop model, where they are buddy reading or they are listening to an audio book while the teacher's meeting with a different group, those are all tasks that are important for them and engaging that they want to do. So the other, one of the other action steps for attendance is our student spotlight, which I believe we do in the next week. We start our first round next week. And again, that's something that Ms. Herson started last year, was really successful. And so it's been built into our schedule this year. So those are just a few things we're going to be working on to get our goals for this year met.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right. So I'll start with the why, as I spoke about goals last year. Michelle obviously did a great job on the district wide. So we take the academic and responsible. A lot of our goals are ongoing. So last year, we had the six goals, two of which we not eliminated, we're still working towards, but had to do with building relationships with families because of COVID, or looked a little different. But as I'll talk about, our four goals, we've got two under academic and two under respectful, tie into last year because we're still striving and there's still change. You hear the word curriculum a lot, it's revised. It's not like we're implementing new curriculum. It's constantly, how do we make things better? Trying to find that target growth. So our two basic academic goals, improve academic achievement in all content areas. To Earl's question, you know, how do you, how do you show that? We've done the I-ready diagnostics. We'll have some figures there. We're finishing up the N W E A's, Common Assessments, grades, which I'll get to in a moment. But all areas was important, because like Michelle said, she's done a lot of work across the curriculums. And it's not just our math program or just E L A. Diving into the P E, diving into the hands-on tech, and the word integration. How do we think more outside the box to get, you know, I only teach math or I only teach science? So that's a work in progress. Action steps, excuse me, revising curriculum in all subject areas. Some departments are entering into our program called Atlas, so putting their curriculum in, working closely with Michelle. Some are very fine tuned and have it down, but are just kind of tweaking. E L A, for example, has got some good stuff, but they're working on a new writing assessment. So a lot of revisions. Another action step is using the data. And what Erica's talking about, to inform our instructional practice, what does the data mean? Rather than just throwing out numbers and saying, okay, here's our projected growth, here's our numbers. Okay, we saw a little bit of growth, but the bigger picture, maybe it's schedule changing. What are other things that we need to do within the school to assist with that? Using highly effective teaching strategies, I talked about this last year. Last year, we introduced some of these influences on student achievement. I can't read that font. Michelle did a presentation with Admin. We presented it to our staff to say, look, these, you know, various colors are what to do and what kind of not to do, because these work, these push and challenge students, and it's good practice. So last year was kind of an introduction. This year, it's more an implementation about sharing within the district.
Can you just give us a couple examples at random?
Yeah, so I think Erica mentioned like homework. I had a pre-conference today. One of my teachers says, I'm giving a homework assignment. And homework, there's various philosophies of homework. So my question back at him was, what is the purpose of the homework? Homework can be an okay thing. You'll see in our math program, it's fantastic. People already talked about this. You go into a math class, it's not the teacher. Like we grew up, you know, at Ward, it's conversation, it's students going home frustrated with mom, saying, what the heck is going on? I had to talk about math today. But it's a high effective strategy. You know, hey, John, take two minutes, turn and talk to Jay about, you know, this problem. Hey, Joel, turn and talk to Peter. Highly effective strategy. So there's just a few examples. We know that teacher's the biggest impact, just like the coach is the biggest impact on a team. So giving them the tools to say, okay, this is, here's a different way to present this to your class. You know, they're not engaged. Why aren't they engaged? So that's still a goal. It was a goal last year. Like I said, we're taking it a step further. And then the final one under academic achievement is to implement the I-ready math program. And that's, that's ongoing. And so learning curve, there's professional development for all our in-service days that we're, we continue to learn and grow. We have Keith, we have Michelle, I'm the instructional leader for the seventh and eighth, or special ed. So I'm diving in, trying to learn more about it as well. The second one under academic is revise grading practices. We're currently doing a book study, grading for equity. Interestingly enough, it does tie into one of our respectful and responsible goals. We've met two, maybe three times. We meet again on Wednesday after school. I think there's eight or nine of us, representation from special ed, each grade level. We break down the chapters and we bring it back to the staff to talk about grading and all of the flaws of current traditional grading practices. So that's been one of our goals. This was on the table last year, if you recall, me presenting, and we just really didn't get to it with everything else. So one of our focus. And then the professional development behind that. And the respectful and responsible, Chris, you certainly can join me, because you're the P V I S. P V I S master. Our first respectful one was implement P V I S model to improve respectful and responsible behavior. So we're three years now into new space, new territory. We were a well-oiled machine at the other building. Students, new routines, they knew expectations, what to do in the morning, where to go, even with an adult not present, much different here. We are, so many shared commodities. This space is a perfect example where students are signing out during study hall. And wham, there's 10 high schoolers. We share a cafeteria. We walk the halls while classes are going on. It's a whole new world. So we sat down as leadership team this year and said, okay, we need to go back to basics. What does that look like? So we've taken the P V I S model, which we were already using. We say implement, we were using it, but we're just revisiting the model for the school year. And I'll let you talk about it a little bit, if you'd like, because you're very good at it.
Because this building is different, and a lot of the things we're tied there is, like you said, as far as just moving about the building or expectations. The staff that we had to use there and how we modeled and teach those expectations are kind of unique, for the most part, to the old school. So bringing it back over here, we kind of had to adjust what was on there and get the staff back on board and then just take those first crucial weeks of school and really hammer out, this is, you know, how we go about different things in the building. And then also correcting them in the moment that things are happening, not waiting till, you know, a week or a couple of days after the fact, addressing it in the moment. Not only negatively, but you see, my thing is if you see someone doing it right, catch them doing it right, right off. So that reinforces those behaviors, so that they're starting to notice that, hey, they saw me, you know, helping this person with a door, as simple as it may be, or walking quietly in the hallway, or whatever it may be. They seem like little things, but when you start adding those all up in the course of a day to a year, it really can amount to some pretty big things. So, and it really decreases in problematic behaviors that we could have with our students. So it's as much of a recognizing positive and promoting that as it is kind of steering them away from the negatives too. So then we just kind of laid out the key areas, whether it be dances or the lunchroom or whatever, and how do we model that and what are the expectations? And the students, you know, share some of it themselves. We use them to kind of help explain that. And sometimes it means more coming from when he appears and he or I standing in front of us saying, this is how you do this, or this is how you do that. So it helps out that way.
Yes, we have a committee. We collect data, just a quick one. We have 90 reports so far this year, 90 B I Rs written, those are behavior reports. It could be infractions such as swearing in the hallway. It could be a more major infraction, such as carrying a vape pen or an altercation, like a physical altercation. We've had 90 up to this point. Our group meets, we have representation of teachers. And then we look at the tiered system. It's a tiered system, three tiers, research-based. Okay, what do we do with student X who has 15 of the 90 reports? What do we do with, you know, it seems to be a common theme with these students? And then implement check-in, check-outs, interventions, et cetera. So it's, it's.
Some of them are not quite to that. It could be like, you know, having a cell phone, you know, in the gym in the morning. So they'll get, it's more just identifying common patterns. So if we see that typical behavior is happening consistently in the building, then we know we need to do a better job in addressing that. So it's not always, I'm sure, but it's informative for us to say that we're seeing, you know, a lot of kids in the bathroom after lunch, congregating, doing whatever. So, all right, well, we need to have more staff near the bathrooms, getting kids moving after lunches and so on. So it helps inform us on how we, you know, address them throughout the day. So there are 90, sounds like a lot, but really, most of them are kind of just nitpicky things, but we want to catch them early and before they turn into things that potentially could go out of hand.
And then our final respectful response was modeling inclusive language and behavior, the D E I that Michelle's alluded to, not just for students, but for our staff and addressing issues, words that are used in the hallways, in the classroom. It's very easy at 2 o'clock, you're ready to sit at home and you hear somebody say something that should not be said and modeling that behavior. So we keep, keep addressing that with staff, not to make it punitive, but to make it a learning experience. That's been a goal, really a district goal. So yeah, there's a few of our action steps. I mean, the timetable is ongoing this year. Like Michelle said, we've got in-service days, we've got P V I S committee meetings, after-school grading, book study meetings, et cetera, to do this work.
Any questions?
Sounds like a lot.
Keep it busy. Thank you. Any questions? All good? Is there anybody else on this subject, or is that? I guess we don't have a chat. Okay. Very good. So next up is, I assume Will's going to be doing now, a piece on ransomware.
I don't want this topic to become all doom and gloom. It was prompted by an article, and I think Peter forwarded some of the articles to you, about a school district. And what I did was send an email to Peter with a subject line that I figured he'd read, which was, do we pay ransom? In this case, it's for digital files. So ransomware essentially is hackers get into your systems. And what they used to do was just kind of encrypt your data. Maybe not all your data, but enough of it to be painful, and then ask for 10 grand, 20 grand, 5 grand, who knows what, to get it decrypted. And then more recently, what they've done is not only encrypt it, but threaten to publish it. So if they get ahold of accounting data, people's social security numbers, they say, we'll also publish this on the dark web unless you pay us additional money. And so this school district basically said, no. And so the hackers dumped all that data. And so it's one of those things where, you know, I was asking Peter, is this something where we want to have an official policy from the school board that we're not going to pay ransom? You talk to the FBI, even when it comes to ransom for kidnapping. They say, don't pay it, because it just encourages the industry. Same thing with ransomware. One of the other articles I sent him was guidance from the federal government that basically said, a lot of these ransomware actors come from countries that are sanctioned. And so paying them could run afoul of our economic sanctions. If they come from North Korea, Iran, or other places, you could get in a lot of trouble with the Treasury Department for paying ransom. So one could almost argue, we probably shouldn't at all. But I wanted the board and everyone to be aware of what way too many schools are encountering, which is the scenario where somebody walks in and they flip on their computer. And instead of seeing their normal screen, the screen goes all red and there's a big skull and crossbones and it says, all your files have been encrypted. There's a countdown timer that says, you have 28 hours to pay us ransom, or we will just delete your keys. Not to schools, but businesses and everything else. There's rarely time to call meetings. So I guess, to keep it from being doom and gloom, I think of ransomware like arson. It may happen, and it's damaging, and it's hard. And you do your best to make sure that you've got fire suppression systems in place to mitigate the damage. But there will be damage. With ransomware, though, they can flick matches from North Korea and Iran or Iceland, who knows where. So you have a broader global threat there. And what do we do about it? Well, we try and make sure we have good backups. We try and make sure that we have genetic diversity in our systems, you would say. That a particular virus might infect certain systems, because some people are on PC, some people are on Mac, various systems are out in the cloud, that it makes it a little more difficult for the hackers to get everything. And unfortunately, what would normally happen is we'd have to go back a couple of days on our backups. People would be frustrated, because we'd have to say, you have to remember all the work that you did over the past three days, because that was the last good backup. And it may take a long time to wipe out. So we might have to go to the central office, completely wipe every single workstation, reload Windows from a known good copy, you know. So it's very disruptive, just like a fire or anything else would be. You know, so it's very disruptive, just like a fire or anything else would be. We can't guarantee it will never happen, but we can put measures in place to limit the damage and disruption when it does. So I guess that's sort of what I wanted people to be aware of, it's out there, you're hearing about it. And the question is, do we pay ransom? The guidance is no.
And I wondered for a while whether this existed because it seems to me like a way that districts could protect themselves. The way your password gets taken is you're using it and you get hacked and they see what you've used, correct?
Well, if it comes to the bigger issue, like how do they how do they get in?
Yeah.
It may not involve a password at all. The hackers go to a store and they buy Sofos antivirus, Panda antivirus, Symantec antivirus, they buy all the antivirus suites. They write their virus, oh, okay, it's picked up by all of these, they modify their virus. Oh, great, eight out of the ten no longer pick up my virus. They send that in an email attachment as an Excel file saying, here's the important invoice to one hundred and fifty thousand email addresses that they got off various lists. And the next morning, they've got seventy-five workstations locked up because somebody received an email, downloaded an attachment that said, you need to enable macros in order to see this invoice. And it's encrypted their workstation and so they don't even have your password, but people bring it in. I mean, sometimes they actually hack you, you know, you've got a server running on your local network that's exposed to the world. There's a variety of ways, but it's often low-hanging fruit. Somebody just, there's also what they call watering hole attacks where we're not hacked, but the main department of education gets hacked. And their website, the hackers add a little bit to it so that when you go to their website, it'll pop up, it says, to see a video from the Commission of Education, you need to download this video player. Download the video player, you know, so it's just there's such a broad spectrum of ways to get hacked.
So what are the limitations that we have for doing more backups? In other words, you said, might not have a backup since last Wednesday. Can't do daily, is it, is it the cost of, cost of problem or is it a?
A lot of the viruses don't release instant. And so what it is, first of all, you can have backups that go bad. But a lot of these things lurk. And so you need to, you may find that the virus got in and it only triggered four days later, which means all the backups from the past four days, if you restore from it, you're just putting the viruses back in again. So it's, they even work at deleting your backups if they can get to them. But we do off-site backups and other kinds of things. Yeah, so it's, I really say it's like arson. There's not, if somebody really wants to come and throw a flame and log through the windows of the school, there's not a lot you can do to stop them. But you can make sure you've got fire suppression systems. And so the focus is not on, we can't let it happen. If all your effort is on the the outer shell, but you haven't done anything to deal with when it happens, that's where you really get in trouble.
So I guess I'll ask the question about your comfort level about our preparedness for being able to restore if we were hacked accordingly.
And some of it depends on the hacker. Some of them are just going to go for the easy stuff. Some of them get into your network. They don't launch anything, they bide their time, they do what they call work laterally through your network. They fly into this system, they fly into that system, and they, you know, and that's more if you were a very valuable target. But I guess, you know, we do daily backups of the things that we need to. Be aware that Winslow Public Schools doesn't actually have a lot of our own stuff. All of our payroll stuff is being taken care of by Water. We, to a certain extent, rely on Water, I guess, but I work for Water though too. But, you know, so a fair amount we don't actually have internally. A lot of our systems are spread out into the cloud. So for example, our student information system is actually kept by the company. We have assurances from them that they back their stuff up. So if the ransomware actually got them, our system, but out there, we hope that they can restore it. But there have been cases where cloud vendors, due to an error, didn't have the backups they thought they did. And so what we have is sort of a diffused risk. Not all of our eggs are in one basket, which does provide some compartmentalization of our stuff. You know, the special ed system is a whole separate cloud provider. You know, and and so it would be a little bit harder for a single actor to block everything. But it also means that a lot of the restoration might rely on outside agencies that actually hold our data.
Well, I guess, I guess I'll say is going forward as we're talking about budget development, if there's areas that you think that we can improve upon that, obviously within our budget constraints that we can afford, then please, you know, please bring that forward and, you know, surely we consider that. Having been through one of these in my workplace, I understand what you're saying and and, you know, having backups, it's not saying it's not disruptive. We had to, you know, buy new hardware and new installations and it was painful and it's like having a fire and you rebuild, but it's slow and painful and disruptive and such. But basically, as long as you get the vast majority of your data somewhere, you can get there eventually, but obviously it's not without pain.
So, yeah. And for me, if if word got out that they asked for five thousand dollars and we didn't pay it and we went through twenty thousand dollars worth of pain, I hope that's okay. Because paying them the five doesn't guarantee that they won't laugh and run away.
Right.
Or still release your data.
Exactly.
So I I hope you're okay with that. If we spend twenty grand rebuilding to avoid five grand in ransom payment, I hope that's okay.
Well, you you make a great point as far as that because if they got in once and you pay them, that doesn't mean they just can't come in and say, well, just get paid once, I'll keep doing it. And not, I can go do whatever I want anyway. I mean, so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know how that rates against maybe no hockey season, but, you know. Too much doom and gloom, that's a good educational stuff. All right, Michelle's got a good one. So proposal for a storage addition at the maintenance garage.
Well, as you know, you know, storage has been a premium for us in the buildings. And it's not just the high school and junior high, of us elementary also. And we all know that the building we're using for a lot of our storage right now is at the junior high, the old junior high, because that's, you know, where it can be a space that we're not able to use any longer. So I think now is the time for us to start planning and, you know, setting ourselves up for some of these, this equipment that we've got everywhere and anywhere. I I looked at an area behind the maintenance garage that I think it would be an ideal space for us to utilize rather than having a number of different little pop-up sheds everywhere where we're starting to have now because we, you know, we have so much equipment that we need to 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 store. So it's essentially is a twelve by sixty addition on the backside of the maintenance garage. It'll be a cement slab. It will store PE equipment that we've got over there, bicycles, tricycles that are filling up the garage and taking our storage space away from football and athletics. And, you know, we've got hockey sticks and helmets that are stored and tucked throughout the buildings. You know, it's it's really a crucial subject for us that we need to accommodate all this equipment that we've accumulated. But I'm proposing it's a twelve by sixty, no power, no plumbing, concrete pad, wood structure, and it'll be be built on the backside of the maintenance garage.
Is this like a shed roof or is it somewhere upstairs?
No, it'd be like a shed roof.
So there's no storage above?
No, it would be just a continuation of that shed roof on the back of the garage. I I personally, I think it's it's a great addition out there. And it is, you know, we've we've got one, two, three sheds hanging around here now. And and we have a situation in Drama where they build their props and stuff that's been cited by our insurance carrier as being an area we needed to clean out. So it could accommodate some of that and open that space up for students. And, you know, it it, that's a huge amount of space to open up for us to use for storage.
So this would be accessible all year round?
Oh, correct, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So by having no power, are you going to be able to see? I mean, that's a pretty big space.
Right, but the thing that I took into consideration was that it's going to be blacker in a pocket if we don't do something. And and try to keep the cost down. I worked with the contractor, we need a assessment together, and I said, this is what I'm envisioning, is that when we build this thing and we build this roof, I want to put like fiberglass clear panels down this roof so that that's going to open up with the light so that they'll be able to see. And then we don't have to contend with the additional expense of electricity or or any of that. And, you know, he felt confident too, as I do, that this is going to provide the type of lighting that they're going to need in there to be able to see.
So I'm I'm just sticking with the example you used of of Drama building sets. They use power tools to build sets.
Oh, we wouldn't use that as a set building, but as a storage space for their props and sets and such like that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't put students out there.
That was in the dirt.
No.
Right.
But I've worked with the code enforcement officer and.
Oh, Court was cool, he's filming it up.
He, you know.
Going lefty from that one.
Go ahead, Joe.
Well, just a question, I mean, that that garage out there now doesn't have any electric in it currently, is that correct?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes, we do, yeah. In in that garage now, because one bay is Charlie's Maintenance Shop. And then we have another bay that is maintenance storage and we keep our tractor in there and our fertilizer and such like that. And then the other two bays is primarily dedicated for athletics because they have, you know, they have the the gator and then they have another white golf cart that they use. And, you know, and we're just crawling all over each other and stacking it to the sealants and it's it's become, now it's become kind of dangerous out there because we do have so much in there and we really need to put more in there from the building to get it out of the building. So I I really feel, you know, this is a good project for us.
Well, I guess my my only thought is that it wouldn't be a lot of money to put a couple of lights in there if there's already existing electricity in the building is my only thought. I I favor the natural light, but, I mean, you know, it gets dark early in.
November.
For a total of a blue, green light, they could use, run an extension cord.
Well.
And and you know, if it.
I mean, a few hundred dollars would probably take care of the lighting.
If you decide to go that route, that'd be easy enough to do.
Yeah.
Because we do have a a junction box out there and and I think there's like four, four or six breakers in it, I'm not quite sure. I'd have to take a look, anything I told you'd be a lie because I can't remember. But we we do have a an entrance box out there so that if we needed to put power out there, and it would only be a lighter too.
Right, a couple of LED strip lights don't have any draw, so I'm sure you have limited power out there, but very little air fridge drawer and.
Yeah, because anything that I put out there would be, would definitely be like an LED that, so that it would be a limited amount of power that we would have to draw out there. And and I certainly want to stay away from any kind of plumbing or any of that because it's not necessary. You know, this is strictly cold storage, we're not going to add any heat out there. It would be a slab that we need to tie into the existing slab by code because I have worked with the code enforcement officer. So, you know, we would do that and then the the rest of it would be a wood structure.
You quoted this, I think, the structure?
I have an estimate of between the slab and the the wood structure, I have an estimate of approximately twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, that's facing twenty and a half, so that was close.
Yeah, and and really, I I don't think that's a bad price for that.
For the size of that space, that's not.
Pretty big, that's a big space.
Yeah.
Concrete work never cheap.
No, and they're local contractors, they're local people, they're excited to do the work because they know their name's going to be on it. You know, so so I would be excited to give them the work. You know, one of them is a former student here in Winslow at the high school. One of the the general contractor himself, his wife is a teacher here at the high school. So, you know, their their name would be all over it and and I'd have a lot of faith that they would do a good job.
This sounds like something that might be good for the tech school kids to to learn how to do something.
Well, if that was something we wanted to do, we would have to certainly put a request in probably two, maybe three years ago to get it done now because, you know, they they plan their work years in advance on what their what their projects are. And we we don't fit in that schedule, unfortunately.
Our needs are fairly immediate.
Excuse me?
Our needs are fairly immediate.
Yeah, yeah, it's growing daily, it's growing by leaps and bounds, you know. And because the needs are more in the building too. You know, they need the space within the building.
Well, we don't have actual rooms in the building, in any of our buildings.
Oh, no, we do not.
Everything pretty much has to go elsewhere.
Yeah.
And when would we be looking at start and completion?
Probably, I would start yesterday and we would have it done by snowfall, I would hope. At least the concrete work get that done.
Question for Peter, I guess, or no, maybe Amanda. Where does this fall in the budget?
This falls in the budget. We've, I've worked very hard to reopen part of our CARES money application to see if we could couch this under social distancing because we purchased equipment for social distancing activities, bicycles.
We need to store it.
Things that we go outside.
I love it.
We need to store it, but also you also need to remove some of the equipment from inside in the drama area so that kids have more rooms for social distancing, so that we continue to keep that space active. So that's that's been reopened, we've we've worked the language we've submitted, we're waiting to hear if it's going to pass muster.
Do we have a motion?
All right, we need, we need a motion.
I agree that we build this structure with the CARES money being the key to financing it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for now. Any further discussion?
I think we should include the request that the administration seek lighting. From an OSHA standpoint alone, there's gonna come a time that somebody says, my thing is just just back there, I'm gonna go get it and there's no lighting.
Yeah, whack your head.
Shelley, you hear that?
I I heard you.
Okay, sounds like it's part of the project, should we improve it?
Add seven hundred and fifty dollars for two lights.
I'll be sure, I'll be certain that it includes lighting.
Thank you.
Basically, yes.
Safety. Social distancing.
Social distancing, right.
Motion amended.
Well, no, if we need to amend the motion.
No, I don't think so.
Provide a little more direction on the construction. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? It is your answer?
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. You need another construction project anyway. All right, so.
Next up is first reading of policy ACAB harassment, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees and ACAB dash R, employee discrimination, harassment and Title IX, sexual harassment complaint procedures.
So we have a few things for you to look at here. So in this particular policy, you'll notice that our policy is completely struck up because the language in this policy changed in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen. We didn't adopt the new policy at that time. There was some thinking that the policy was going to change again in that same year and we were waiting for some direction on those changes, but that didn't happen. So right now, our current policy. So right now, our current policy is, needs to be updated with the understanding that this is probably going to change again this spring. When we had Drummond Woodson review our existing policy regarding another matter that, that, um, that we were involved in, uh, they strongly recommended that we adopt the most recent policy, um, at that particular point in time. That's what you see in front of you, strikeouts from our existing, and, um, a draft of the Drummond Woodson recommended policy in this area.
I'm going to sit go through the policy committee for their review and endorsement.
I've got to tell you, the policy committee has put in incredible amount of hours on policies that you're going to see here this evening. We've met, and we spent hour and a half just on one section of one policy, there's been a lot of time put into this. Um, you'll also see the rules that accompany the employee complaint procedure, there are procedures that you need to follow, because if somebody has a complaint, they need to have a place to go to online and find, and find, um, those rules and to know how to file a complaint. Chris Preble is our, um, Title IX officer, and so he's also, uh, mentioned in here that that wasn't updated. Shelley, uh, is the affirmative action officer, she's mentioned on this as well, in another policy that we'll see.
Okay. In, in our definitions, and I, and I know where this comes from, because it comes from the law, in, in our definitions, and I'm looking at ACABR, um, section one, A three, harassment is described as, as an individual's actual or perceived membership in a protected category. And I wonder whether or not there would be problems from a, for Drummond Woodson's standpoint, to include that caveat throughout these. So going back to ACAB, we refer to harassment as these protected classes, but there is no reference to perceived belonging to these, to these classes. And I think that's a very important distinction that I would like to see spread as broadly through our, our policies and procedures as is practical.
So to take me back just to where you are right now?
Okay, so, so if you, if you look at ACABR.
On ours old or?
Uh, on the new, sorry.
New.
Um, on page two, which is definitions, definitions is one, and it's A three. Harassment is, is oral, written, graphic, or electronic, or physical conduct relating to a person's actual or perceived membership in a protected category. But if you look above, if you look above a discrimination, it only has their membership in a protected category, not perceived membership in a category.
And I will, I will say to you that I've just dealt with this, and that whole perceived thing is what got us in trouble with our existing policy, that we didn't have it in there.
That we did or didn't?
Did not.
And, and that, I would like to see perceived spread throughout all of these documents, because even your draft of ACAB, which is not the procedures, but the draft of the policy, it, but it addresses being a member of a protected class, but it does not include that protection of perceived. I would like to see the perceived language spread throughout these.
We're, we're in here as a definition of protected categories, I'd like to know what that means.
The protected categories are those categories that are in the policy. This will, the procedure is, is application of the policy. So the protected classes is the very first paragraph under ACAB, which is, which is, um, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, ancestry, genetic information.
These are protected.
These are protected classes.
Protected categories.
Protected categories, yeah.
It says protected categories. So all of these things here are what that means?
Yes, and, and I would like to see the policy ACAB and across these other policies as well, reference, um, reference not only being a member of the protected class, but being perceived as a member of, of any of these protected classes throughout.
In rereading that list, I'm just going to throw this note, like religion, if you're a religious person, you're protected.
Your religion is protected.
Oh, is that what it is? I, I don't know, I'm asking because I don't follow the answer.
If I perceive you to be Jewish, or you are Jewish, and I treat you unfairly, I don't think it should matter whether you really are Jewish or not, I think that's irrelevant.
No, 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 debating.
No, I understand.
I'm debating what, what these categories make up, because religion could include almost everyone.
I think ultimately, we are not the experts here with, I think bringing your concern back to the attorneys who are the experts with these types of documents would be the appropriate step, because this is not our.
Right.
Our special team.
I guess what I'm saying is. Protective category includes everyone, not just protective categories.
Well, this is specific to Title IX, so. This isn't, I mean, that's what this is a drug.
It's a word religion, we're retired. This makes me think, I'm sorry, it could be anyone, everyone.
Yeah, okay, Peter go ahead.
When you, when you go with the definitions, the definitions of harassment and complaint procedure definitions, Jay, what Jay is saying is, when you look at that definition, it's included in that definition as the perceived, so the intent is to apply it to the policy without making the policy really long. So I think when you, when you, if you got into a situation where you had to deal with this, what the language that's in here right now would cover what Jay is, what Jay is concerned about.
So it applies for harassment, but not for discrimination, because that term perceived is not in the discrimination.
If you look at the first paragraph, it says discrimination or harassment.
But then when you look at the definition of discrimination, it doesn't include it.
It covers it previously.
Number two, it, it, so why, why wouldn't we make it clear?
I think if we had the attorney look at it and confirm that that original definition does cover everything going forward, that we could let, get back to Jay to.
I, I will check back with Drummond Woodson on that and get that answered.
Yeah, and that, that was my initial suggestion, is that we, we check legal.
To assure you that that does cover your concern, I think that would be the step.
I think in my words, it's a lot simpler, if this means that anyone can be in the protected category, just the whole thing could be, just don't harass people.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
But it's the whole legal ease piece of it that you have to spell out.
This is about Title IX, so we're, this is about Title IX. This is not about every other, any other type of harassment. We have to address the legal requirements of Title IX, which is what this effort is, because we have other policies that address other issues. So.
So we'll get back to Jay to assure him.
Well, we do have to have a second reading on this. So we can, I would suggest, since we don't have firm language on what Jay's talking about, and we're going to consult with attorneys, and I would suggest that we pass the first reading on this, so we can get it into motion, since we're already a bit behind on having this. And then we can come back with our second reading and get the advice on that and.
I guess I need to be clear what I'm asking the attorneys though, because when you're talking about harassment in their definition, oral, written, graphic, electronic, or physical conduct relating to an individual's actual or perceived membership, to an individual's actual or perceived, if I'm understanding you correctly, Jay, you want something to be said under discrimination as well?
Well, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that, um, our reg, a regulation does not hold as much weight as a policy. I would prefer to see it in the policy, not in our locally adapted regulation. So I would prefer to, to, to see it stated.
These are, these are the rules in terms of how you enforce your policy.
I, I, I understand, they're the rules. I don't want it to be in the rules, I want it to be, I don't, I don't want it to be in the enforcement, I want it to be in the rule. The rule is the policy, the enforcement is the regulation. I would rather have it be in the policy where it's stronger.
But you wanted to say harassment includes, but it's not limited to verbal abuse. Where would you put the word perceived?
Based on, based on actual or perceived, race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender, based on actual or perceived. Yeah, you can.
Well, would it not then discriminate, or ask rather than discrimination?
That, that, that's a, that's a reasonable.
Discrimination, you don't remember, but it's harassment, because I perceive you, so that'd be why it's in one, but not.
That, that's a good, that's a good thought, that's a good thought. So that, that's, that's my overarching concern, and it goes across several of these, um, excellent pieces of work by the policy committee, and, and I may just, this just be misunderstanding how it applies everywhere, but I, I, I really like clarity, and, and I like that terminology. So the more we can make it crystal clear, that, that's what it means, and we don't have to say, you got to find it on page two of the regulation, that it really does mean, you know, I, just put it up front.
See, if I, listen, I agree with everything you just said just now, everything, crystal clear, clarification. If I throw the word perceived in there under harassment, I've just muddied the waters, I think.
Because perceived by who?
By who, a person being harassed or harassed, I've just muddied the waters.
I really think, where we are not attorneys, that that, you know, we're not the experts to kind of say if this is sufficient or not, and bring up the question and the concern, and then get back to Jay to let him know, because that's.
And it's not just about me, this is, this is the whole board, I mean, I'm, I'm bringing this up on behalf of what we, what we all want our policy to say.
I mean, the word perceived is in A three, all right?
Right.
So I think what Jay is saying is just extend that to other places, where you could throw in the word perceived to expand the other definitions.
We'll just want to solve, yeah.
Right, yeah.
To, to provide clarity, continuity, and make sure that it's, that it's pervasive through, through all of these.
And I, I disagree, because it raises the question of who's doing the perceiving.
Right, we don't, well, I don't think we're saying to throw words into a legal document like this, but to consult with the attorney and, um, address the concerns of Jay. Are we good to say that?
I'm just trying to clarify what you're saying. I don't understand why it's in here once, but not in here more than once.
It does me.
Yeah.
It muddies it there to me.
Because the attorneys have done a lot of this, all right?
So Erica has a question or a point.
Well, I have a question or maybe a clarification, because I am on the policy committee, and so maybe somebody else can remind me. Um, these policies were drafted from policies that Drummond Woodson, um, developed, right?
Yeah.
This is all Drummond Woodson language.
This one entirely.
I'm not a attorney. No, I'm, yeah, this is from the.
But it's, it's not unique, I've been in a position before to ask for requests, and Drummond Woodson has changed the policy.
I think it's a good question to ask.
So they, they do like to hear how we read it, and.
Yeah.
Because we want, we want our public, when they read this, to know what we think it means, and what Drummond Woodson thinks it means.
So our course of action is to bring the concern to them and then get back to them.
It is, I, I'm going to give you my two cents of what I think this means. If you, if you look at the rules, they're talking about the individual relating to an individual's actual or perceived membership in a protected category. So, physical conduct relating to an individual's actual or perceived membership, whereas, whereas in the front, we talked about harassment, it says it includes, but not limited to what those pieces are. The next apart, the other part is talking about the individual, the actual or the perceived. So it's, it's kind of two different things, I believe, in this case. But I will contact them and get the answer.
So, John, can you be right back?
Maybe there are other questions or other topics about this.
Well, is there any else on this particular piece, which was the ACAB and the ACAB dash R, which is what we're covering right now? If there isn't, I guess I would entertain a motion for a discussion that we would approve this as written, and, and first reading, and we have the attorneys in a reading to.
Chris, on A B and C.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Someone?
Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion today, second here. Okay, there's no further discussion? All in favor of approving the first reading of ACAB and ACAR? It is unanimous? Correct on that? Yes? Okay, very good, all right. People will check that out, and. All right, uh, back to my agenda here. Next up is first read of policy ACAA, harassment and sexual harassment of students, and ACAA dash R, student discriminate, discrimination, harassment, and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedure. Which, so the one we did before was employees, and this one is students. But it's still Title IX.
So they exclude the only.
So we did the same there, as we took the Drummond Woodson language, and use that wholly, with the additions of the appropriate people. And do we need any other discussion, other than Jay, probably, are you thinking you want to have the same thought process on this one as?
Yeah, just their confirmation.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion on this, or should we move to a motion to approve it as presented in our first reading?
I'll make that one, so.
Okay, we have a motion tonight, we have a second from Jay? All right, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the first read of ACAA and ACAA dash R? Next up is first reading of policy ACAA, A, transgender and gender expansive students.
So, with this particular policy, we worked with Drummond Woodson, again, had them look at our existing language, and give us some suggestions for our existing language. I worked actually with Melissa Huey on this one. Melissa Huey sent back their language that she recommended that we use. One of the pieces in our existing policy that was confusing to some is that it gave people the impression that parents were. people the impression that parents were having something kept from them. That's not the truth because that's not how we applied the policy. There were some verbiage in this policy. And Chris helped me out here to find it. But there's verbiage in here that simply says, um, her state statute or something along those lines. But the way that it was written, it made it sound as though things could be kept from parents. And we wanted to make the policy more user friendly, if you will, and to make sure that parents understood that nothing was going to be kept from them. In fact, I had a meeting with an individual regarding that exact topic. So the draft that you see is the Drummond Woodson language. And it does exactly that where it explains various, you know, and obviously the purpose explains definitions. And it goes into what the purpose of the policy is. It also has. Policy, yeah. So I don't know if you have any questions if you've looked at it, if you've read it.
I, I do, only because there's a sentence here in page two under D, policy on specific issues, privacy confidentiality.
Are, are you in the revised policy or the draft policy or the old policy?
ACAA.
He's in the draft, you know. Okay, so you're.
That's the old policy.
Do I have to go with the cross out?
Maybe that's why I'm confused because there's so many copies.
Because you're going, I think you were going for that section.
Yeah.
And no.
It caught my eye, it was like.
Right.
So what's crossed out, John, is old.
Oh, okay. Well, I wasn't looking at the right one, I guess. Looking at the original.
Yeah. And so what you were looking at, the original, is what raised some eyebrows before.
Yeah, it raised my eyebrow. Okay, so let's line this up.
I thought, I thought you were looking at this sentence here.
D. Well, I was looking at this sentence right here. Under D, privacy confidentiality.
And that's the, this is the.
School staff, it could buy with the student switches.
Yeah, this, this is, this is the new one. This is the proposed one.
Not, it's clear to what he just said, which, which.
Which one did you got?
The one in the strike throughs is the old one because it has strike throughs. The one that is, that does not have strike throughs is the proposed one that you were getting.
Okay, so I'm confused because this one still has.
Draft.
That's the one you, you.
So if you look at the one that says draft, you'll see the old language.
We're both looking at the.
You'll see the old language and the language that's in.
It's like a red line.
The little skinny one is the old one.
Okay. So, so this one here, John, that you were looking at was our old policy in its entirety before it was edited by.
So I just got to flip to the right page because it's not lined up page wise because there's more pages now.
All right, that was completely lost on me.
Okay.
Okay, so policy of specific issues, that's crossed off. Privacy is crossed off, has it been replaced?
Yeah, it's been replaced with our language.
So the parents are just left out of it?
Yeah.
I mean, their, their parents are an end.
They're here.
No.
The case of a student was not yet informed, their parent guardian.
Oh, further down.
Page four.
I'm on the same, I'm on page six.
If you go on page seven and on the D.
Six and seven, I think is where you need to do.
Seven D, I think is about here.
Okay, let's.
Yep.
Page seven.
Yeah, up here.
Yeah, misreading the.
So even if you go before then, John, on page four, number three.
Okay.
Starts there. In the case of a student that's not yet informed their parents' guardians, the administrative school council social worker should first discuss parent guardian involvement with the student to avoid inadvertently putting the student at risk by contacting their parents' guardians. Student will be notified by the appropriate school personnel prior to contacting the parents and guardians. Parents and guardians.
They're giving the option to the kid.
They're notified, they're notified.
They're notified first.
Student is notified that the parents will be called.
Okay. I'm just, you mean, we're misreading it, I guess.
You could have some real bad issues here. If somebody is very against this and doesn't believe in this and is going to attack their own child, we've seen it.
Mm-hmm.
Suicides with these types of, with, with students who identify differently and transgender is forty-one percent.
Great.
And this is regardless of age of students?
The policy is regardless of age of students. We have students at the elementary school or express. Yes. So one of the things you can do, John, is take this back as we listen to first reads and second read, we can take it back and go through it very closely and email questions that you might have on it. So I can answer those questions that you might have.
The Policy Committee did spend hours working away for this.
I'll make a motion to approve this first read.
Before you do that, I appreciate that. Before you do that, there was one piece in here that, that we had eliminated that was originally ours. And that was on page. If you look in the new, if you look at the draft, it's on page three. C, addressing the needs of transgender and gender expansive students. So in our original, we had had conversations about keeping that paragraph because some felt that that paragraph was explained things nicely. And we made, we made a few suggestions. Joel had made the suggestions of making some, just moving some words around, as will the all students in the second, second, second sentence, putting that at the beginning. But we made a suggestion that perhaps we keep that paragraph in there. As I was typing this and looking at it and going through it again and again and again, it seemed very redundant to me. If you were going to keep this with the Drummond Woodson language, if you kept this and removed the Drummond Woodson language, it didn't flow and it didn't work as well. That was my opinion. But after looking at it again, however, the committee did talk about keeping that paragraph in there. So Joel asked to bring that paragraph up tonight for consideration, if you want to add that back in or review it just as is.
More about kind of an introduction to some of the other details, but maybe a little more of an narrative to the details of the file.
What is the harm in keeping it in? It just felt redundant.
Right? Because if you go on to the next, um, if you look at the draft policy and go to where it says C, addressing the needs, they just go right into, for the purpose of this policy is student be considered transgender, they just go right into, um, an explanation. But.
I guess, I, I would say that this is, um, I guess a little softer introduction versus just jumping into policy language that's real. Hard and specific and whatever. Short of that, yes, I mean, if it does just touch on the subjects that have come, come later in the policy, I would agree with that entirely. And if you're not comfortable with adding it, this time around, you could review it further and, you know, we could add it in the second read if you want to consider that. But just kind of throwing it out there. You can put it in this time or not, or next time or not, so.
Is there, is there a, uh, time deadline on this one like there was on the, you know, in far as a action necessary? I'm just thinking, well, I, I'll have to, I guess I'll hold my vote until future reading, but.
Is there a time, is there some time deadlines? It's just that it should be updated.
I just like to get those.
I mean, if we're otherwise good with the policy, with this being the only question in particular, or any other questions that could be handled in the second reading, I would suggest that we pass the first reading amended or not. And so that we can move the ball forward because I, I understand that, you know, that our administrators do have to deal with this. And the more explicit policy that we can give them to work with, I think is helpful for them.
They don't get the policy down for the second reading.
To talk for the second reading. But if we delay now.
Then it's another month.
Then it's going to be another month.
I think that adding any more words than necessary provides, adding that is redundant because everything in this is in this, laid out specifically as each step. This is a synopsis. This lays it out. This is redundant and it's just one more thing that an administrator or somebody has to read that they don't need to.
Which is, I think, part of the reason why we kept a separate piece of paper.
Yep.
For discussion and.
And to go back to your question, John, I do think that there is a need to move on this. And the reason that I think that there is a need to move on this is because it puts your guidance department at the high school, it puts teachers at the high school, it puts people in a very weird place when some of this language is not as clear as it could be in terms of our process and procedures. The draft from Drummond Woodson is very clear in terms of rights and how that, how this is, how this is going to work.
Based on what Earl was saying, I agree that concise is better and that I would make a motion to move this first draft as is on the draft with this paragraph removed.
Without that.
That's how the draft is.
So as the draft was presented.
Correct.
Yep. Second. Have a motion, we have a second. Any other further discussion?
I am going to stay until I hear back from you, you're answering my questions, so.
And what was your question, John?
I'm going to try to write it out in a way that'll be more clear, but basically it's parental rights. Because I just think this is a big deal not to be one hundred percent open to the parents, but maybe I just don't know of the cases.
Seven D, page seven.
Which part do you want?
Page seven D.
Page seven.
School staff should keep in mind that under FERPA, federal education rights for.
Family Education Rights and Privacy Act.
Yeah. Student records may only be accessed and disclosed to parents, guardians and to staff with a legitimate educational interest in the information. That means if the parent comes in and they're talking about questions about their student in the classroom and it is a legitimate educational interest, they have to be informed. It's under the law.
Okay, but they don't have to be informed unless they ask?
Do, does.
If a student says, I don't want my parents to know, we say, under FERPA and the law, your parents have a right to your educational records and a right to know. So.
Okay, so that the answer I'm looking for is yes. They do get to know regardless of what the student's.
We make a plan with the student to let the parent know, right?
Okay. That's where I was misunderstanding it. Because in one section, it looked like.
Right.
The student was able to say, no, it looked like.
And it's really always been that way because the old language referred to as required by law, but it wasn't really spelled out.
Correct.
But the law has always required.
I just pictured a six-year-old saying, don't tell mommy and daddy. And, and that doesn't seem right to me that.
I think.
Six-year-olds, you get to decide.
I think you had a lot more, I think you had a lot more violence and unacceptance when this first came out than you do now. And so I think that's why, first time that this came out, it was couched under this FERPA. But that was always, that was always the L where you had to.
Misunderstood, that's what that meant.
You, you asked for other comments. On page nine, E four, there's at least three typos in that paragraph.
That would be me.
It was good getting toward the end, you were very tired, I'm sure. Prohibited, aware and become.
Become swear.
Prohibited, become and aware.
Yep.
Unless there's one I didn't notice.
No.
I just.
Prohibited.
Prohibited top line or?
The first sentence.
Top line.
E four.
Yep.
Fourth, fourth sentence down.
Yep.
Is that the word, prohibited?
Prohibited. I read it and I, and I thought I didn't know the word.
I think that should be prohibited.
Prohibited.
Okay.
All right.
So do we have a motion?
We have a motion, I may have a second from Jay. No, Earl.
Grammatical errors.
Grammatical errors.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? On the paper of approving the first reading of ACAA and ACAP.
Is that part?
Yes.
All right. Now, was that presented without that additional?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm going to get it here. Next up, first reading of policy IJJ, instructional and library material selection.
Another one of those that.
Topics.
It is a Woodson recommended policy language. It's, a lot of it touches upon what we already had. But there were some pieces that we were missing. One of them was, uh, what's the paragraph? We had to choose an A or B.
That was in the beginning.
That was in the beginning. So.
That was the third paragraph.
Third paragraph.
Yeah.
Third paragraph was something on page three was something we were totally missing in ours. It was something that they said we highly needed to have in there. The more you can tie things into the main lunar results and what you're teaching, the better off you're going to be is, is really the point here.
Yeah. If we're going down the state, it's going down with us.
Exactly. Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Obviously, this policy statewide has saved lots of attention lately, so I'm sure it's been scrutinized immensely.
Yes.
But we were actually in pretty good shape previously, but a little bit of language there because we were.
And this also has a citizens' challenge of educational media forums, a forum that goes. And this also has a citizen's challenge of educational media forms, a form that goes with this. If somebody did have a challenge, they were able to complete this form. And then steps that go with this as well.
Yep.
So this policy spells out the procedure for selection and challenge.
I think that was, this was unanimously approved by the policy committee.
All of them, yes.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft as presented.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
Is this a?
This would be a first read.
Then what are we reaffirming? Okay, so we're reaffirming the.
Wait a minute, is it the first read, or is this the?
The only thing you're reaffirming is the educational media form.
Okay, so.
Because there's no change to that.
Okay.
The other ones are first reads. But, that's a great question. They're going to go together on our website, because I've asked Will to look at those policy pieces and make sure that they're connected, so you don't have to look in two different places.
Yeah, yeah, but one goes straight away. It's like an addendum.
So we have a motion, do we have a second to approve this draft policy as presented? We do, for the first read. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second from Earl. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving policy AG, what is it, IJJ? Unanimous, right? Okay. All right, very good. All on policy work there.
Then, motion to reaffirm the citizens' challenge. That was directly from the original.
Citizen's challenge of educational media form, which man makes a change.
Correct.
First tomorrow, second tonight. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, very good, thank you. Next up, follow appointments, we have five appointments. Do we have any additions since this was presented? Okay.
We're to take them as a group.
We have a motion to take them as a group, do we have a second? We have a second from Karen. Any discussion? All in favor of taking them as a group, it is unanimous. Do we have a motion to approve the list of appointments as a group?
So move.
Second. Sorry, Earl.
It's all good.
All right. Jay, second, John.
It's all good.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of approving the group of appointments? It is unanimous, thank you all. We have no resignations?
Thank God.
Oh, you have resignation to add.
Amanda, don't tell us.
The resignation to add is Jerry Clark.
Oh.
He is a bus driver.
Okay.
And Jerry is taking a job in Stehegan, which is closer to his home.
Good for him.
And we have.
Yeah.
Somebody to fill that role?
We have someone temporarily will advertise and I think we'll.
Okay.
Yeah.
It'll be okay. All right. Get on walking to the school. Okay, very good. Other business, do we have any other business?
Did we go on adding, did we go on adding Jerry Clark's names?
Resignation.
You have a resignation, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. No other business? Okay. That being the case, our next meeting is November twenty-eighth.
Wow.
Six P M. We're getting closer to the end of the year, and then we get to start talking about budgets and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not doing, we're not doing a little bit of Thanksgiving, you.
Nice.
All right, so that is our next meeting. If there's nothing else, I maintain a motion for adjournment.
Some more, second?
Okay, Earl, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of adjournment? It is unanimous. Thank you all.